Okay, Mr. Resch, we are live on YouTube. The meeting is yours.
Hi, welcome to the May tenth policy meeting. It's now in session. Please, please, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the last policy meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or discussions? Saying none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Items recommended for work session action meeting?
Yes, I'll be happy to take it from here, Mr. Resch.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Resch and Mr. Fusco and Mrs. Stoll. Happy to be here with you this evening for the May, I can't believe it's May, addition of the policy meeting. So I'm not sure we have a ton of spectators here. They're all out on the athletic fields after stopping at North Penn High School and here at Penfield. But we still have some important business to cover. We have three policies that are a continuation of our policy review process, I'm sorry, four, in the eight hundred series. That includes eight oh six child abuse, eight nineteen, which is suicide awareness, prevention and response, eight twenty-two automated external defibrillator cardiopulmonary resuscitation, and then eight twenty-three naloxone. In addition to that, we did last month review some updates from PSBA to our policy two eighteen student discipline. And while we reviewed that and made some adjustments and had conversations, prior to it going back to the full board for a first read, we brought it back to this committee for some adjustments. So I will now kick it to Mr. Summers, who will highlight a few things in each of these policies. And in particular, I would expect some conversation about two eighteen. Mr. Summers.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Bauer. So going through the items in order, the first listed is policy two eighteen student discipline. So we had just had that policy before the committee. And then subsequent to the committee's review, PSBA issued an update that included revisions to this policy. So those revisions have been incorporated now into the version that is attached to the agenda tonight. The, the primary reason for their adjustment to the policy is as a result of the US Supreme Court's case in the BL versus Mahanoia area school district, which was the cheerleader who used profanity on Snapchat and was disciplined. And then the case went up to the Supreme Court, which found that the school was, in that circumstance, was not permitted to, to discipline the student for her speech that occurred. So the changes that PSBA recommended were really designed to make it a little bit clear when the school has authority in terms of students being at school, being at school sponsored events, traveling to and from school on school buses, you know, at the bus stop, that sort of thing, which are clearly times when students are, are under school control. And that during those times, the student code of conduct may be administered and students, you know, are expected to follow all school rules. And then it gives examples of circumstances when off-campus speech by students may be subject to the code of student conduct and students may be subject to discipline. For example, where there are direct threats of violence, where the speech that occurs off-campus substantially disrupts the school environment and some other circumstances. So it will continue to be an area of some gray, a gray area that there will be some, some difficulty determining exactly when student speech that occurs off-campus may be disciplined, but it tries to give some greater direction to our school administrators about what factors they need to consider when, you know, considering student speech that, and student misconduct that occurs off-campus. Those are the, the primary changes or adjustments that have been made since the, the policy was before the committee. And just as a reminder, policy two eighteen does exist. We have previously adopted two eighteen. We had brought it back to the policy committee because of some adjustments in terms of the, the board and the Safe Schools Committee recommending some additional data gathering efforts. And so that was why it came back the last meeting and then PSBA came out with their suggestion. So before I guess moving on to the other policies, any questions about two eight or discussion about two eighteen?
Yes. So I know that one of the, the sticking points with this policy was in the verbiage, in particular, the understanding of when using, what do they call it, reasonable force may be used by teachers and other school authorities under any of the following circumstances. The first one indicates it's to quell a disturbance. And I believe I had communicated some concern the last meeting with that language because I thought it was rather vague. And I know that, Mr. Summers, you've definitely sort of looked into it. And this is language that reflects the language of the school code in Pennsylvania. And further, I believe you've looked into what other policies across the state say, and it's fairly identical. I did a little bit of, and I mean not lawyer worthy, but I did a little Google search. I did find in both in Michigan and in Virginia for their student code of conduct related to discipline. They also use the terminology quell a disturbance, but theirs is a little more nuanced. They suggest it's to quell a disturbance that threatens physical injury to any person. One goes as far as to say threaten any physical injury to any person or damage to property. I would suggest that that makes it less vague, right? That certainly I believe that an individual has in their right to try to intervene if a student is in danger, if the teacher feels themselves are in some sort of imminent danger, that they should have that right. Quelling a disturbance, I, by itself, I, I don't believe that there is going to be a teacher who reads this policy and says, oh, good, so I can drag this kid to the ground if he's calling out a class. I do, however, get concerned that if there is a, in a situation where somebody, there's a question about whether or not the force they use was reasonable or the circumstances in which they used the force, it comes into question that they could look at this policy and they could say, well, I was quelling a disturbance, right? A quelling a disturbance could just as easily be defined as somebody standing in a hallway, you know, screaming for whatever reason, clearly disrupting class. Obviously, that situation needs to be dealt with. But, you know, do I think that that should, that we should authorize teachers to physically put their hands on that student and remove them? Not every teacher, no. Like, I believe that we have staff that do have specialized training to intervene in specific situations. We certainly have security whose role would be much more appropriate to intervene specifically in a situation like that. So I would be, I, I would be comfortable with this policy if we could borrow the language from Virginia and Michigan that simply states to quell a disturbance that threatens physical injury to any person. I suppose I could go as far as or damage to school property as well. But I ask my fellow committee members and more specifically, Mr. Summers, what your thoughts are on that suggestion.
Sure. So I think that in terms of the potential injury to students or property, that is reference actually in the, in, in that line, in that sentence that talks about when reasonable force may be used. One example, so it gives four examples. One is reasonable force may be used by teachers and school authorities under the following circumstances. The first, as you mentioned, is to quell a disturbance. The second one is to obtain weapon, possession of weapons or other dangerous objects. The next one is for the purpose of self-defense. And then the last one is and for the protection of persons or property. So I think that, that using force to prevent injury or damage to property, you know, is covered by that last example of for the protection of persons or property. So I, I think the reason why that, this exact language that we have in this policy, I looked at, you know, probably half or more of the other Montgomery County School District policies. They all have the exact same language. I looked at, just out of curiosity, the School District of Philadelphia, which tends to have a number of discipline policies that have been reviewed and somewhat modified. They have the same exact language in their policy. And I think the reason is, is that the state, the Pennsylvania State Board of Education has a regulation that has this exact language saying that teachers have this authority. So I guess my concern with changing this particular language is even if we did that, and then there was a circumstance where force was used other than the examples that we list. And let's say it was quelling a disturbance, not involving damage to property or, or injury to a person. And the school district went to discipline a teacher for that, for example. I think a teacher would point to the state law and say, I'm authorized, I'm entitled under state law to use reasonable force to quell a disturbance. And, and the school district cannot deprive me of that ability. That, that would be my only concern. So I think that, you know, other states might not have in their law, they, that language may be in, in state law in those states about, you know, quelling a disturbance.
Yeah, well, that was state law I was referencing, not some random districts in the state. That would be accurate. I guess I still in trouble though, even if it's at the state level. Like, I guess essentially what this policy is saying is that quell a disturbance means exactly what I'm describing, a situation, right? Where a student is disturbing classes in a hallway and a teacher can take it upon themselves from any of those rooms to come out and exercise some sort of force to stop them. I feel like that, you know, if this were specifically security, if we're specifically people who are trained in this, I would certainly be much more comfortable. I understand that this is something that reflects the law. I understand also that a teacher could point to and say, well, the school code suggests that I'm fine. And in such a situation, I don't believe they would have any legal recourse against us. I mean, certainly they would win an argument if we said, you know, the arguments could be whether or not it was reasonable anyway, right?
Correct.
So as I receive these policies, because they're a reflection of the law, they're also a reflection of our principles. And whether it's in the school code or not, I am not going to sign off on a policy that says teachers can stop a kid because they're being loud and put their hands on them because they're disturbing their class. I feel there's better ways to do it. I think state should take this up and should reconsider its language and look at, at other states like Michigan and Virginia in the way that they've, because you could combine quell a disturbance. You could take four of those examples and turn them into three, like Virginia and Michigan has. And I feel like it would be a better policy.
Could I ask a question here? My question to you, Kyle, is who gets to determine if it's reasonable? Is that determined by the board? Is that determined by the administration? Or does, like, like my colleague's suggestion that it's determined by the teacher? Because if, if reasonable is determined by the board, then I'm not sure that the issue is what, what you're suggesting, Chris. Mr. Fusco.
Yeah, I think to answer that question, so initially, the, the way in which this policy would come into play would presumably be a staff member who is disciplined by the district for using excessive force, you know, force that is not reasonable. And so the method by which that would happen is that the administration ultimate is, is the first line of discipline. So, you know, the, the superintendent or designee is, is the individual who imposes, for example, a suspension or a termination of a staff member for using force that is not reasonable. So that would be the way in which the policy is enforced. Then ultimately, if that staff member says, I think my force that I used was reasonable, they can, they may, if they are terminated, bring that challenge before the board to, to contest a termination, for example. Or in the case of unionized employees, they may file a grievance and it may go before an arbitrator to decide if the force was reasonable. And then ultimately, if there continues to be a dispute, a court would determine if, what this language of reasonable under the, the code of the State Board of Ed regulations, what does that mean? And, and was the individual's use of force reasonable? And, and different factors will come into play then, such as, did this individual receive training on how to disperse a disturbance? Or how to deal with a student who was attempting to harm other students or cause damage to property? I think one, one note is, is the school code and the State Board of Ed regulations don't define what force is. So I think that our, our discussion has focused on physical force as, as being, you know, what we're concerned about. We certainly could look at language that accept, you know, along the lines of except in unusual circumstances, staff members exerting physical force shall be those individuals who have been trained. I think we're really talking about restraints when, when we're talking about physi, that's what comes to mind is, is, is a restraint being applied to a student with regard to physical force. And certainly, we would want only individuals who have been trained in how to perform a restraint, for example. So, you know, I, I think we, we could add some language along those lines that, that physical, you know, physical force shall normally only be utilized by staff who have been trained with regard to the use of such force. And again, that would primarily be our security staff, but also other teachers and administrators have been trained in, in how to perform safe restraints.
I, that would make me more comfortable with the language if what we were suggesting was trying to differentiate or try to nuance the definition of force itself. Obviously, I believe teachers have a right to intervene when a student is being disruptive in class. I certainly don't feel like they should have to stand there and allow that to happen. So if, if that is the suggestion to make, to try to delineate, you know, where the line is in terms of expectations for, for staff in a situation like I've described or something similar, then I could prob, then I could support this, this policy.
And I'll second that motion. If we want to take that back, add that wording in, I'm fine with that.
Well, I think Kyle could add it and we could still move it forward. Am I correct, Kyle?
Sure, yes.
Yeah, we could still, we don't have to necessarily consider it again at, at policy.
Okay, great.
Yeah, if, if the committee is comfortable with approving it with the understanding that we would make.
I, I would say though, there was one other note I had about this policy. And that is that multiple times we've referenced training. The policy itself does not, and other policies we're considering today do. So while it doesn't need to be an extensive explanation of what's involved with the training, I do think that it's important to highlight that there's an expectation that we have training involved for teachers to be able to safely intervene in situations where force is, is determined to be necessary. Is there some kind of statement that we could add as well about? I don't know, and I don't know what the training encompasses. Is there a yearly training for staff in this? Is there a semi-yearly, like what is a training requirement for something like this?
Dr. Dietrich, did you want to speak to that?
Yeah. Mr. Fusco, you're getting into exactly where I put the raised hand up to be able to comment on. So I think we should have discussions with leadership of our employee groups in terms of, you know, various scenarios. And of course, we want to avoid a scenario where a staff member gets involved in something where they should not have gotten involved in, or there was, you know, use of force where they weren't really in a position to do that. At the same time, of course, I want to have conversation with our leadership of our employee groups because there's the other, there are all these different scenarios. So there's a scenario where I would not want a staff member to feel like they didn't intervene because they were worried they were going to get in some kind of trouble. And it would have made a difference, you know, when they're in the midst of something unexpected. And while I didn't, and it got worse because they didn't intervene because they were worried. So I think we have to look at a whole spectrum of possibilities and just assure people that, you know, if it's necessary, that they need to intervene in order to prevent something from getting out of control, that their timeliness in getting involved is important, not waiting for somebody else who had maybe more advanced training. So I think we have to talk to them about the, the whole matter. That's what I would recommend.
Yeah, you know what? I think you're absolutely right about that, Dr. Dietrich. I think it's important to get to hear, I know I could certainly, you know, appreciate hearing the input from NESP and for NPEA and see where they stand on this policy and what their, you know, their comfort level is, both in what I'm suggesting and, you know, the counter to that. I think that that really is important piece of this.
Well, one thing I'd like to say is that after this discussion, I start to wonder if this is in a talk for, work for safe schools and not for policy. And because I think this is a document that may change a lot of times. It's something like the memorandum of understanding we have with the police departments. So I'm not sure this is a policy issue. It's, it's something that should be addressed. But I'd like to hear what you think, Dr. Dietrich and Kyle.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is an important topic. We want to keep our schools safe. We want to make sure that people intervene when they intervene. We want to make sure that they're being the right way, that they feel that they've been properly prepared for various scenarios. And it's something that should, you know, be reviewed periodically, not just, you know, once and done, and we never talk about it again for a long, long time. So, yeah, I agree.
So I do believe that the way in which it came back to this committee was that it, it did get sent to Safe Schools. And we discussed it at Safe Schools, made some additions to the reporting requirements and the data. And then in the meantime, I think you said, Mr. Summers, that PSBA made some updates then, which brought it back here. And now ultimately, you know, it, it certainly could go back to the Safe Schools Committee, but they did recently weigh in on this as well.
I think personally that we've expanded, we've asked for a definition of what reasonable forces to use restraints in the schools. And I'm not sure, I'm not sure that Safe Schools has really dealt with that issue.
I wonder if it might make more sense to put it on a work session agenda, right? So that the whole board can, can chime in, we could have a chance to speak to leadership, the teachers, the unions. And then because really, if an action meeting, we're not necessarily going to have a particularly substantive conversation about this. And I just feel like we're not there yet, right? So while I agree that maybe it's, it's, you know, another step back to extend it back to Safe Schools, maybe it's something that the entire board needs to chime in on at a, at a work session, where we're actually like, you know, doing the sausage making as opposed to just putting it on a consent agenda.
And that, after listening to Dr. Dietrich, it doesn't sound to me necessarily like it's a board issue. Because if he's talking to unions and he's talking to other people, he needs to get their input. So it sounds more like a, a, a committee, a school committee of some kind that they would put together to tell us what they think and, and, and give us direction. So I'm, I'm wanting to listen.
We can certainly do that. That's not a problem. So we'll, we will add the language regarding, Mr. Summers, you referenced accept in extenuating circumstances and the training. And then also we can get some feedback from our labor groups. And then we will bring it forward to a work session.
Or honestly, it could be action, to be perfectly honest, as long as we have it as an agenda item to discuss before we vote on it, just not to put it necessarily right onto a consent agenda, right? I think that's the key is give the opportunity to hear what the feedback was from the unions. If there's any feedback from anybody else in the, on the board, you know, and that really then we can move forward or not with it. I mean, I'm assuming we are since we kind of have to, but I think that would be fine, whether it doesn't be the work session, if we don't have too much else. And I don't think we should have a work session just for this.
We need to discuss the training in that document also, Chris.
Yeah, well, just a statement about the training, right? Some sort of, some sort of comment on it. It's interesting because, you know, like I said, other policies do reference training, but actually eight twenty, no, eight oh six, for what it's worth, uses the exact same language from Michigan and Virginia. And it talks about quelling a disturbance. It says it specifically to, if something's threatening physical injury to a person or damage to property, which is interesting too, so.
So I have a quick question. So is this policy, it's been, it's been approved before and keeps coming back, right? So I take it that the policy, like if something would happen today, the policy is that currently is approved is what would be in effect, okay?
Yeah, I assume it's in effect right now. This isn't changing the fact, it's just without the updated language, correct, Mr. Summers?
That's right, yep.
Right, okay.
So the one last question. I believe the new policy is better than the policy we have in place now. Should we approve it and then come back and readdress it again in a month, Kyle?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think what, what is being discussed is that the committee would approve the, these new revisions in addition to, with the understanding that we would add some additional language about for, physical force only being used to quell a disturbance under, under normal circumstances, when the individuals performing that force have been properly trained and then have some descriptions as to what sort of training those staff would receive. And if, if that's, you know, if the committee is comfortable with that, then we would also obtain some feedback from the, the applicable employee groups and, and administration about any other nuances that the committee or the board should be aware of. And then that policy, this revised policy, as well as that feedback, would be likely on the June action meeting as a separate, you know, non-consent agenda item for board approval and, and discussion.
Understood.
Okay, so any other questions before we move on to the next policy for two eighteen? Okay. So the next policy on the agenda is eight oh six, which is child abuse. The district currently has a child abuse policy that requires all staff to report child abuse in the event that they suspect it. But this eight oh six policy contains all of the detailed definitions that are set forth in the law. So it, it explains, it defines what child abuse is. It sets forth the, the training requirements for all of our staff on receiving child abuse recognition and reporting training, which is required under state law. One thing that in discussion with Mr. Resch and Dr. Bauer that was added to this policy that PSBA did not include was the fact that district students who are the victims of suspected child abuse will be referred for appropriate supports and services in the district. So students who may be the victim of, of child abuse and are an enrolled student in the district will be referred, for example, to a child study team, a student assistance program, a five oh four or IEP team, you know, whatever the appropriate supportive service is. That language was added to this policy, which I, I think is helpful. So our, our staff are well aware of their child abuse reporting requirements, but this policy just provides it in great detail what those requirements are. So any questions on eight oh six? And then eight nineteen is suicide awareness, prevention and response. State law does require districts to have a suicide prevention policy. And so this policy is based upon the PSBA model. The PSBA model is based upon a statewide recommended model for responding and addressing potential suicide. So that policy is, is consistent with the district's current practices. It will require, once it's adopted, a formal Um it will require, once it's adopted, uh a formal designation of of a district-wide coordinator um as well as building-level coordinators for addressing um, you know, potential student suicide issues. Um so certainly an important policy, um uh but one that there were uh really not any changes that the district made to the the PSBA recommended version. Any questions on eight nineteen? Okay, um eight twenty-two and eight twenty-three, I'll just kind of cover together. It's the automated external defibrillator, um and then the naloxone policies. And those policies are really just the the designed to ensure that the district has um devices and or medication or training available to support individuals who may be in distress. Um they set forth that uh individuals within the district will be trained um uh with regard to the use of AED uh devices, that the district um will have individuals trained in CPR present. Um and then the naloxone policy, the district already has uh a a a detailed policy for Narcan. Um and so this is just a couple of slight modifications in terms of the procedures that are used um with regard to the administration of that, but that is a po- a policy that the district has had uh in place for a while. Um so any uh questions on those?
Just one, um the naloxone, is that um is that mandated by the state that we um have that on hand?
It is not. I don't believe it's mandated, but the district has voluntarily done so um for a number of years.
Okay.
Uh do I have any questions from the board or from the student rep? Seeing none, uh recommended policies for first reads of policy two eighteen, eight oh six, eight nineteen, eight twenty-two, and eight twenty-three. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move those policies to our upcoming action meeting for first reading.
Do do I have a second? I I second.
Second now.
Okay, thank you. Um we're going to repeal policies uh five one four seven.
Mr. Resch, I'm sorry, we have to take a vote on that motion in second.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Uh, so uh, um can we?
All in favor?
All in favor? Say aye.
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 Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Um we did to re- um repeal policies five one four seven, five one three one dot nine, which is suicide awareness, five one four six dot one. Uh administration of uh Narcan, Narcan. Um are there any? Uh do do I have a motion to repeal?
Yes, I moved.
Second.
Can I have a second?
Motion to move it to action for consideration for repeal. Uh is that, does that mean, I'm just curious, too, um since we're repealing the other one, so we are now using, I'm sorry, Nalo-Prex, is that what it's called, instead of Narcan? That's that's what's happening here, like just logistically?
No, it's the same, it's the same drug.
Same drug?
I probably just said it wrong.
Okay, that was it, okay.
I'm sorry about that.
I thought, no, I thought somebody else had referenced a different drug for some reason.
I I I did, I I called it Narcan. That's just a a common uh term. It's it's naloxone, it's the same.
Okay, I don't know. What do I know?
So are there any informational items?
So we have a uh a a motion and a second, so we got to take a vote.
Okay, uh do uh hold on. Any more comments or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. I can't see anybody else. Is everybody else okay?
You're all set.
Yeah, I was on mute.
Do student reps have any, are there any informational items? Sorry. Do student reps have anything?
I do not see our student reps with us, Mr. Resch, so I think.
Are there any? Okay. Is there any public comment?
At this time, nobody has their hand up.
Uh is it, is there any other business?
Hang on one second, Mr. Roche, Mr. Lanier has put his hand up. So, Mr. Lanier, when I unmute your mic, do you want to read the the statement about audience of citizens?
Uh I don't have that in front of me.
I'd be happy to do that, Mr. Resch.
Thank you very much. I'll pick that the next time.
Absolutely. Individuals attending this meeting virtually and intending to speak to the committee shall, should be aware that they are being recorded. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the committee during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the committee, quote, raise their hand electronically and state their name and municipality. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments to matters being discussed at tonight's meeting or matters that may come before the policy committee. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the committee, the chairperson may ask an individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker.
So at this time, Mr. Resch, we do have one um citizen, Mr. Lanier. I'm going to allow you to talk. When I allow you to talk, please unmute your mic, say your name for the board.
Jason Lanier Lansdale. Um first, guys, letting you know again that you're in violation of the Sunshine Act. You you're holding this uh two reasons why you're in violation. One, you're not supposed to be doing virtual meetings any longer. Second, in order to make it virtual, it says even up on the uh board docs that you were going to post something allowing people to join uh pri- thirty minutes prior to the meeting beginning. That did not happen. Um setting that aside, I had a question regarding um policy uh eight oh six. And specifically, how do you guys square policies that you have enacted that violate the policies that you've listed here in eight oh six? And uh for instance, uh we even just in the definition section are talking about child abuse. When you're causing substantial contributing or uh to serious mental injury to a child through any act, failure to act or a series of acts uh or failures or someone, um are are privileged blocks included in that? Because I know that you you guys admit to the one, but also agree that there's been other places that have them, I think. Uh you know that there's been other classes that have that. Want to make sure that 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 is no longer happening, because I think that would fit into this category. Um and when you're talking about uh the next line, line four, causing sexual abuse or exploiting a child through acts of or or failure to act, is bringing, I guess, sexually uh explicit books into the library, I think would be counted under here. And if we even went further into uh exploitation of a children, uh child rather, uh sexual abuse or exploitation, participating in sexually explicit conversation uh either in person, by telephone, by computer, or by computer-monitored aided device for purposes of sexual stimulation or gratification of any individual. Now, I I don't know why anybody would want to talk to a kid about their sexuality. I'm assuming that's not happening. Haven't been able to 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 verify that that is or is not happening, but certainly seems like this would be violation of it, which actually brings it back down to the delegation of responsibilities of making sure everybody is is good on their background checks. I know I was involved with U-Sports and we we did a lot of federal background checks. Want to make sure that all, anybody involved with talking to a child about their sexual preferences and or um I then a sexual identity or anything along those lines would have that. Because, you know, you you get into a a pretty fuzzy area there when you're starting to talk to a child, especially one uh without the parents knowing. Uh it it borders on the line of sort of um grooming, if you will. So I want to make sure that that's not happening. I want to, I want to ask, you know, Mr. Summers in particular, how do you square these two things? Another uh line in the Child Abuse Act is is uh interfering with the breathing of a child. And and meanwhile, you guys have your masking policy. I forget which number it is. Your masking policy is completely that one hundred percent. You you can't just violate one law because you think it's a good thing to do uh for whatever reason. These, your policies are not, can't supersede state law. Am I right? I mean, Mr. Summers, you know this. You you can't have a policy that is and runs contradictory to the state law. State law says it's forbidden, it's forbidden. You can't say, well, it's okay this way, because uh we think it's more important. We deem it more safe to do it this way. You guys need to be straightening this out. This is all going to be really problematic. And I can even roll it back to your 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 policy eight thirty-two. Who, what state authority in the in the school code gives you the right to write a equity po- uh uh educational equity policy? There there is none. I I went through all of those those authorities. They're all, every single one of them, every single one of them is a uh school policy. Now, there is references back to state law or in state uh school code, but most of them do not. So you guys need to really clean this up. I'd like to hear some feedback on on how you reconcile the differences between your policies and and what's legally allowed by state and what you're doing. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Are there any other comments?
There are not, Mr. Resch.
Uh is there any other business? Seeing no other summary of items, um we're going to move uh two eighteen forward after uh uh a slight modification. We're going to move eight, policy eight oh six, child abuse forward, eight nineteen, suicide awareness, prevention and response, eight twenty-two, auto defibrillator, and eight twenty-three, Narcan, sorry. Uh and we're going to um remove policy five one four seven, child abuse, five one three one dot nine, suicide awareness, and five one four six um awareness and Narcan, sorry. Um next meeting is uh June fourteenth at five P M. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Have a good night, everybody.